Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with my nation and my land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item of business is the approval of the minutes of our April 25 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
No, I think they cover it.
Seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second that we approve the council commission minutes, excuse me, from April 25, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so again, all right, minutes are approved. Next item of business is citizen comments. These are for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here at this time that has any comments? Okay. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Demoter, citizen and town council member, 1007 Meadow Green Drive, Mount Airy, Maryland. I looked at the agenda and I didn't see this on there. My question is, we have a workshop coming up on the Beck property June 2nd, I think?
Yes.
And so at the last workshop, I asked the question about the exemption to the open space. And they said they're currently operating under the assumption they would get the exemption. That's their pre-concept plan as of now. So I guess come June 2nd, we're going to see maybe a revised plan, but it's probably still going to be assuming they're getting the waiver. So my question to you is, you have not made that decision. When do you plan on making that decision? Because the sooner you make the decision, the sooner we'll all know if their pre-concept plan is accurate in terms of open space.
Well, first off, and Tom, we call it a waiver, but it's, what do you, you use different verbiage. What do you call that? Did you say waiver or?
Yeah, it's a waiver.
I'm sorry, I thought you called it something else.
Probably say that that probably occurs at the concept plan review because that is when you're reviewing the APFO.
APFO?
Okay, so I'm going to ask a question. Debbie, are we still moving forward with the joint council and planning commission session on June 2nd?
Yes.
Because I got to cancel.
Okay, but it was canceled for here. That's what the ca-
Master Plan Work Session.
Right, that was the master plan.
That was the confusing, Carl, right earlier.
I know, and I knew it would be.
It's on the bottom of the agenda that the Beck-
You see the reason for asking.
I understand, I understand. And that waiver, I'll say it one time, it was put in place because we had to do something because that is a combination of commercial and residential. Commercial does not have a open space.
Roxanne, we did not have to do that. That was a proposed ordinance.
I'm sorry.
We did not have to do it.
We didn't have to do it.
No. We should not have done it. We did not have to do it. People voted for it and it got done, but we did not have to do it.
Yeah, so it is a mixed, it is a mixed-use development plan.
Yes.
And you see the reason for the question is?
Yes.
And I'm saying it to try and not slow the process down, but keep your process moving.
It was all 10% across the board.
The sooner we know what you're going to do, the sooner, like when we go to that workshop, I think the public is going to be maybe asking the same questions sitting there that I would be asking, which is, you guys are making this assumption, when are we going to know if this is an approved waiver? So-
We just, well, it's going to happen at the concept plan when all the other APFO stuff happens. That's when that will happen.
Okay. Just understand, you'll probably get a lot of questions on that as-
I understand, and that's, I understand.
All right.
Have we had a similar situation ever in the past?
No, because this is the first time where.
All right.
Anyone else have any comments? Ron?
Wasn't planning on speaking, Ron Thompson.
Can you turn the microphone on, Ron?
Thank you. Wasn't planning on speaking, Ron Thompson, Van Mar Associates. I'd like to try to clarify what this misperception of a waiver is. Town of Mount Airy came up with a process in which all projects, because they've deemed not having sufficient open space townwide, then had, came up with a way of measuring open space requirements for individual projects involving residential. Three acres per hundred people. And if you met that, what is in the code for that on an individual site, then the town had the, Planning Commission could then grant the so-called waiver because you were meeting the town code on site, even though the town itself did not meet the entire open space requirement. Again, for mixed-use development, when we went through this, we talked about whether it should be three acres per hundred of just the residential, and we came up with the analysis showing that when you included commercial space, an appropriate level of open space was 10% of the entire property, including commercial space, including your roadways and everything, rather than just looking at the residential component and taking three acres per hundred people of just the residential. It was much easier and cleaner for the town to look at it as being 10% on the entire property. And that's how it ended up in the ordinance that was passed. So when the development meets the 10% threshold, then they are providing the required open space on a project consistent with the town ordinance. And that gives then the planning commission the opportunity to say, you've met the open space requirements on your site, therefore, we can consider giving you an approval because the town hasn't moved forward to solve their own townwide open space requirements. This idea that you're getting a break, a waiver means you're getting a break and providing less open space is an incorrect perception to put out to the public.
So based on what you're saying, there, regardless of this ordinance, there would be 10% open space across the board?
In mixed-use development, we're required to provide a minimum of 10%. We cannot, I wouldn't bring a plan in, quite frankly, less than 10%.
Regardless of 2021, '17, or '18, or '16, whichever one it was, you're saying there will be at least 10% open space throughout the entire development? You're saying that?
I would not bring a plan in front of the planning commission like I do, do not bring a plan less than three acres per hundred people straight residential to you, knowing that I don't meet the individual requirements. There has to be a minimum 10% to bring that for you.
And this is why, if you want some history, this is not about you, Ron. And this was a big discussion, you know, that how much of the development had to be residential and/or commercial, and they managed to get it up to 75%, which is way too high because that's really not mixed. And therefore, even if it is 10% across the board, they have a lot less open space than they would have to have if they actually had the requisite amount for the 75% residential. And then, on the other side of the street, they're pretending that it's mixed-use and it's all residential, and they think that they can get the same deal because of these ordinances. So that's, that's the very brief version, the simplistic version of what's going on.
That is your version, not mine.
Well, of course, it's not yours. We know, we know how you, we know how you work, Ron.
To the workshop, differ until the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Just leave that alone.
Thank you.
Our next items are from the Frederick and Carroll County Planner. I think Hannah's here. From the Carroll County.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I don't have any updates that I didn't share last month, just that we're still working through the agriculture and conservation zoning text with the planning commission, and still working on the annual report and transportation master plan and things like that. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's not more interesting.
It's okay. That's okay. Do we have any questions for Hannah? Anybody have any questions about anything else? Carroll County for Hannah?
No, just thank you for coming. Every once in a while, we do need a non-exciting meeting and report, so hey.
It's a lot more empty than it has been the couple of meetings.
One small question. In these reviews that you're doing, and the things that y'all are working on, is there any aspect of that that has significance for Mount Airy or something that you would want to make sure we were aware of?
Well, the main things that we're working on are very countywide, like the annual report is just, it's kind of just like demographics, development, like it's not much room for interpretation, it's very much the facts. The agriculture and conservation zoning text, as you guys know, we've been going through the comprehensive rezoning process since 2018, and this is the final piece of our zoning text that needs to be updated. The transportation master plan, we met with town staff for their input. So as of now, I would say no, but you know, it's always an integral part to our plans is the towns, so.
All the meetings and workshops are on the website to, for times, we can see.
Yeah, I think what I was trying to hint at is like, there's no large-scale residential that you're aware of, or any type of residential developments being considered right now?
No. Not in area, no.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The next items are introductions and recommendations to the town council. The first item is the possible request for third-party review. I'm doing, are we not going to do the review of the MXD? Well, it's the first-
You're going to number five would be-
Oh, I'm sorry. I crossed off number five instead of four. I'm sorry. The next item is S-21002, the Twin Arch Business Park, Lot 20, that's Ultra Utilities Construction. The applicant is requesting approval of the concept plan. And we have the engineer here, and would you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, everybody. My name's Jim Whitmer. I'm, I'm the owner of J&amp;M Engineering. We just actually moved in across the street, one park, so, you know, I don't know the format that you guys usually do, so this is my first one, so make any mistakes.
We'll let you know. Generally, what we do is we have the staff report. John goes over the staff report for us, and then after the staff report, you, the representative or the applicant, and then we ask questions.
Okay.
So this is S-210022, that's 0022, for Ultra Utilities Construction. It's a lot 20 in the Twin Arch Business Park, Section 2. Currently, the lot itself, the owner of that property started laying gravel down, which then we basically said, you know, you have to have a site plan approved through the town planning commission for this parcel. So they, I guess, reached out to Jim, and so this, this plan is part of them improving the property to make a contractor's equipment storage yard in a flex space. It will have, excuse me, two, two levels of office space at the front of the building with a warehouse portion in back. It's a total of 12,270 square feet. Again, they do meet the required parking spaces on site. And again, I do have the plan up on the board here. I will go through down here to the, here's the overall site plan itself. It does show sidewalks around the outer edge of the building, towards the front, where the mezzanine and office spaces on the first and second floor. Again, the whole property is fenced in around the building. Again, a single-use access off a back acre circle. I don't think, from my understanding, Jim would know better, is, I don't think they do a lot of clients coming to the facility. I think it's more of office staff and a distribution area for their equipment and their, their workers going out in the field. I do want to go to the landscaping plan, which is what you see up on the board now. Again, the, the plan itself is still, again, has, excuse me, one second. There we go. Again, you can see that the, the property does have landscaping around it. I do have a concern about one of the issues, and I mentioned it to Jim, about they're proposing white pines. Typically, white pines don't last very long, and they're also high maintenance. So I think one of the big things we need to think about is to pick something else, a Japanese cypress or something like that, or some type of evergreen that is more hardy and strong to hold up to winter weather, et cetera. So I think that was something that brought to your attention.
John, are there some other examples currently of landscaping that, that has those qualities, those properties?
You're talking about the white pines or the?
Well, I mean, I'm just on other lots out there in that development, in that, in that area.
Yeah, I mean, I can bring those to you if you need to. I don't have any of those in front of me.
How about any native, native plants?
Is your mic on?
Oh, it got turned off. Oh, my goodness. I had to shut myself up. Are there any native plants, native trees that might work? You know, native to the area? Because it's good for the, the birds and the bees and the, no, seriously.
I'm not, I'm not an arborist, so, but all I know is that white pines don't hold up for long.
So that's a good call. Yes, yeah.
So are you thinking more of something, well, because we definitely, we want something kind of wide for screening, so like some type of spruce, maybe, that doesn't get, doesn't grow quite as fast, or?
Again, this, this will still be under review as part of the landscaping plan through Carroll County, but I'm just saying that white pines typically are not hardy plants, so we're concerned about, you know, longevity. And again, it might be that the density of the screening might have to increase, and it might be more of like a, an evergreen. Like you say, the Japanese cypress, I think, are very hardy, and they get 50, 60 feet tall by 30 feet in diameter.
Okay.
I don't know the Latin name for it, but pretty sure it's a Japanese cypress.
And non-natives, okay, to use for just screening purposes?
Once again?
It, sorry. Is the non-native species, okay, for just a screening purpose?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
We would prefer to have native, yes, but if that, if we can, if, I'm sure there's got to be some type of native. If you can't find it, then the Japanese cypress would be okay.
Okay, I can, I can get a list and I can send you to see.
Yeah, and again, Jonathan Bowman with Carroll County will be looking at that as well and reviewing for those items.
Okay.
Chair, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. John, just one question, maybe the, I mean, I did a quick summary review at the House and this, but I didn't, did not notice a lighting plan for this. Was this included?
So that's actually part of the final, final plan, and the photometric plan will be part of the final plan submission. He does have it, I think, boxed out on the last page, I think.
Okay, because I, when I was looking at those, I didn't notice the locations of the, you know, the-
This might be an earlier submission?
Yeah, it's on sheets.
Because I don't see.
Sheet six, if you go to sheet six. But it's, there's nothing to see. It's just boxed out.
There's nothing to see, there's no light, right?
If you, on, on sheet one, on sheet, or on sheet two, I should say, there are preliminary locations, that what we're proposing are some pole lights and then some building lights as well.
As long as, and you're aware that we have the low sodium color, even in LED, the yellow lighting.
Yeah, and the full cutoff.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Again, you can see the, the front elevation here. This is with the stone front at the bottom, which is what we require sort of in that area, is to have a stone, a stone base in the, in the front of the building.
Not to interrupt.
Hey, Carl.
And what type of business is this again?
So they're underground utilities, is my understanding, so they install maybe fiber optics or cable lines or whatever.
And are they, are they relocating to Mount, Mount Airy, do we know? Or are they?
Don't know that yet.
Right now, that, right now, they have most of their equipment in Frederick. So, yeah, so they'll be relocating.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did have something. If you wanted to look up, the Northern White cedar is native.
Northern White cedar, okay. Thank you.
Seeing no questions, do I hear a motion for approval of the concept plan?
I'll motion.
Go right ahead.
I'm going to read the whole thing? I had to say something. Just the back part. Yeah, just hang on. So, okay. Recommend approval of the concept plan, that all APFO pending approvals are addressed prior to the site plan being presented to the town of Mount Airy Planning Commission for final approval, and that all town and county agency comments are addressed prior to the final site plan being presented to the town of Mount Airy Planning Commission for final approval.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we recommend conditional approval for the concept plan for Lot 20 of the Twin Arch Business Park, Section 2, Phase 2, subject to the following conditions. One, that all APFO pending approvals are addressed prior to the site plan being presented to the town of Mount Airy Planning Commission for final approval, and that all town and county agency comments are addressed prior to the final plan being presented to the town of Mount Airy Planning Commission for final approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, you have approval.
Thank you very much.
We made your first one easy. Now we'll go on to introductions and recommendations to the town council. Okay, Section 98-61-11, the possible request for a third-party review of the proposed MXD development project within the town of Mount Airy. Beck Property Pre-Concept Plan, the Pattern Book, Concept Plan, Final Plan, and Construction Drawings. I can't remember, did we discuss this at the last meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I'm getting my meetings mixed up, I'm sorry. The mayor asked if we would consider doing this, and it is actually in the ordinance that if we want to, we can do this. I felt it was worth bringing up. I think it's a great idea. This is a, a concept that we're just, you know, mixed use, we're just starting out on this, and I think that the more help and professional help and we get, the more eyes looking at it, the better off we'll be. Anybody else have any?
I agree.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
Absolutely.
How fast can we get someone in after this is?
Okay, so, yes, Ron?
Ron Thompson, Van Mar Associates. The code does, does allow the planning commission or the town of Mount Airy to hire experts as they deem necessary to review MXD projects. We're still at the beginning of a stage where we don't even know if we have a project yet, and to bring somebody on, if you bring an expert on to review a plan, and then, does that mean if they provide their recommendations, the town council will follow their recommendations automatically and vote approval? Or what, what I'm suggesting is that before you bring on a consultant, you spend the time to determine what the staff has the capability to review, and that you're comfortable with them reviewing, and determine the needs that you desire for those type of reviews. Not one consulting firm can provide you with what you may be looking for, and I would encourage you to take that time to, to analyze what your needs are as a planning commission for it, not just because it's in the code. Automatically go hire somebody and then start billing against the consultant, which I believe is what the code says can happen there. I think that you need to have what you're thinking about in a project, and then, as it's moving forward, if you decide that you have certain skill levels or review that are required, that you feel necessary outside of what the staff can provide, then those are the type of skills you would then pursue in a consulting for it. Just automatically, let's bring them in. Now, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
That would help you shape the RFP.
Do you mean, once we know more, not sub-final or preliminary plan, what's, what you're saying?
Well, and, and once we've spent the time to look at it, big picture, you know, and evaluate, you know, what are we really dealing with here? And, you know, what are the preferences? What do we think works the best, so forth and so on? I'd like to see, you know, a timing and a scope kind of consideration.
And now, I'll agree with, it is good to bring a third party at a certain stage in to review, but if we don't even have a plan yet, but at least if we can give the town council someone a recommendation that you agree with it, the concept of it, that at least can keep, you know, keep the ball rolling, that we have approval of the planning commission to do it.
Right, we can vote on it tonight. It doesn't mean we're, we're saying when it's going to start.
Right, exactly.
That's, I think.
My only other comment would be, I would encourage you to enter into a dialogue with your staff.
Yeah.
To determine what they feel comfortable with and what they feel that they can provide for those reviews as your technical experts, and then supplement around that.
Ron, I might make a suggestion for your clients, the Kaz Brothers, which is, when they've been here the last couple of times, they've gotten some really, really critical feedback, negatively critical feedback, not just from us, but from people, from residents. And so maybe they could start. If you don't want us to hire someone now, then maybe they could start redesigning, you know, and, and making it a lot better than it is. And also, you know, you weren't, you weren't so much around a few years ago when they were talking, the stuff that they were talking about, well, it was a lot nicer than what they're showing us today. So if you, if you want us to wait, then why don't, why don't you talk to them about doing something?
I'd like to think the plan we're bringing on the second is addressing a lot of the concerns.
Okay, well, that's good.
I was going to say that I don't think there's, it would be a bad idea for us to try to go forward with it now, and then set maybe a parameter, hey, they're going to start at this phase reviewing what we want. That way, you have it established, it's already ready to go. You don't know how long this is going to take, but hey, they come in and start checking it at this part of the process, reviewing.
Well, I think we just have to agree, yes, we need to agree with it, but it's going to have to go through the, we're going to have to have an RFP through it, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong?
I-
I think you're wrong.
No, I believe we-
Well, we're not paying for it.
No.
Let's just say, we might, they'll pay for it, or we'll pay for it first, and then we'll backbill the developer or something, but I think we will have to do an RFP or something for that, to a pain to it, so, yeah. So.
Yeah, I, so we really do need to vote, because that will probably take some time. So I'll just make the motion. All those in favor of recommending to the town council to start the process to request a third-party engineer to review the prop, to review MXD properties? Let me start over.
Yes.
In one of those days. The motion is that we are approving or approval of a possible request for a third-party review of the proposed MXD development with, project within the town of Mount Airy. And we're giving approval to the town council to start that process. Is there a second?
Aren't we recommending not approving? What, what does it say? What is it?
It just says a request for third-party review. I'm saying that we approve.
Okay.
That we're approving the, positive. Is there a second? Is everybody clear? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right.
Yeah, I'm almost, I'm almost more comfortable making this as a recommendation to council.
Okay. I will, I, okay, fine, I can.
Recommend. Go ahead, Bill. Sorry, Ross.
Well, I, I would propose a slight modification that we, we propose this as a recommendation, this step, but I also feel like we need to do our homework, and we may need to have more public discussion with town staff in terms of the feedback we've already given them, and their response to that, you know, how they feel about some of the issues, some of the items. Just make sure we've done as much as we can do, and then we pave the way with this recommendation to council, that we create the RFP, we bring in additional professional expertise to help us take the next step beyond what we're capable of doing ourselves. That's all.
Okay, so we still don't have a motion?
So, can we require it, or can we recommend?
We have to, we recommend to the council that they do that. Go ahead, turn the mic on.
Oh, I will hand this out. Roxanne has a copy of this.
I didn't bring my copy with me, so.
So, some background.
Taking that second copy.
You're saying.
I'll, I'll, hold on, I'll, I'll share with Bill.
There you go, Roxanne.
Let me give you the genesis of this. So, Roxanne, when you're using words, and, and Bill, when you're using words, "We want to make a recommendation back to the council." That's already happened. I'm on the council. I made the recommendation to the mayor.
Right.
That's what this email is. I sent an email to the mayor saying, "You know what? Given, given my concerns at the last workshop," and I expressed this at the workshop, and there are other comments that echoed my concerns from others, "It doesn't, it didn't appear to me that the pre-conceptual sketch was providing all the features and meeting all the goals and objectives that are stated in the ordinance for what a mixed-use project should be. It was not very aspiring. It was not very creative. I did not see all the elements of a top-notch mixed-use development, per the ordinance." So I suggested to the mayor, I said, "You know, my philosophy is, I want to use all the tools and resources available to me." So there is this clause in the ordinance that says, "If the planning commission," that's you guys, "if, if the planning commission needs some assistance throughout the development review process," so the pre-concept sketch plan is part of the development review process for MXD, "you can go out and get some expertise to help you review, even at this stage, the pre-concept sketch plan." And so, my recommendation to the mayor was, "I think you ought to recommend to the planning commission, they take advantage of this opportunity. This is, this is a new type of a development. You want to go out and get somebody who's done mixed-use development planning, who has the lessons learned and the expertise, so that even at this stage, someone can look over that pre-concept sketch plan and say, 'Okay, this looks good, this not so much, they're not taking advantage of this, I've seen these five mixed-use developments that have incorporated these features, they're not giving you the best they can give you.'" And you may not have that expertise, because you have not planned out a mixed-use development. So, I made the recommendation to the mayor. The mayor was open to that suggestion. The mayor invited me to a meeting with Roxanne, the chairperson. We talked it through, and now you have the opportunity, as the planning commission, don't recommend something back to the council. You guys get to decide if you want this resource. And I have to say, I'm, I'm hopeful that the plan we see at June 2nd is much improved. But remember, this is a joint workshop. So we're the council members. I'll be looking at this with a critical eye, but I'm expecting to get your expertise and guidance and your review. So I'm expecting at that workshop for you guys to say, "I like this revised plan, I don't like the revised plan, it has enough open space in my view, it doesn't have enough open space in my view." And I think you ought to take advantage of getting some expertise right now to help you through that, because we're meeting in like two weeks, and I'm expecting from you to fulfill your, your review as a partner in this. So my thought was, and, and I was gonna speak tonight only at first to say, when I made this request, you know, some may look at this and want to use it as a stalling tactic. My intention wasn't to delay anything. My intention was, get somebody on board, give them five hours, eight hours of consultant time, let them review those pre-concept plans, and start getting some feedback. And you may even have somebody, I know you have the design collectives, folks, I don't know how much experience they have in mixed use, but you might have somebody already available that could be somebody. I'm not saying they're the right person, but maybe they, they could be. So, anyway, all that to say, don't send a recommendation back to the council, because, because I, as a council member, have recommended that to the mayor, and he's recommending that to you, to say, "Hey, take this as an opportunity, get, get some expertise," and I think it helps you as a planning commission. So when the public pushes on you and the council in our decision-making, you can say, "We tried to make the best decision we could, and we got the resources we needed to help us make the best decision we could to deliver a mixed-use development that's worthy of the citizens of Mount Airy. And so, we went out, and we got some extra consultant help, because we want to make the best decision possible on that pre-concept plan." And let me remind you, again, I'm, I'm, I'm new at this as well, but my understanding is, that pre-concept plan, once that gets approved, that locks in the density, i.e. that locks in your open space, and I'm still kind of puzzled that, as a council member, I'm gonna be asked to make a decision on a pre-concept sketch plan, yet I'm not gonna hear from my planning commission whether or not you think that's enough open space until the concept plan? That makes no sense to me. But that's a separate issue. You can think about that. But I just strongly recommend you guys, I mean, you're here tonight, think about it. Just make this, take a vote, and if you think the resource is gonna help you, take a vote and say, "We want the resource," and, and get it moving. Thank you.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay, let me ask Tom first, before we do this. So, we have the recommendation from a council member to do this. Do we need the whole council to say yes to this, or a vote from the council to say, "You have my blessing, go?"
If I recall, I could be wrong, so search the minutes. If I recall correctly, I thought that occurred.
Okay.
Now, that's subject to review, but here's what the ordinance says. It says, "Throughout the development review process, should the planning commission determine that additional assistance to review and applications required, the town may hire a licensed professional."
All right. Okay. All right, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay. I motion that we, the planning commission, hire at some point that we determine is necessary, appropriate, we hire a licensed professional, such as a landscape architect, an architect, and/or an engineer, to assist in the review of the application and the development review process.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that the planning commission hire, at some point, a licensed professional to assist in the review and approval process of the mixed-use development. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, John, now, thank you, thank you, Leslie. I'm sorry?
Nobody said nay.
No one said nay? So, John, we'll get with you. Does design collective still have, we can still use them, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they're part of our, they're on, on retainer, but I'm not sure if that's who you want to go with, and I'm not sure of the right next step. I was gonna talk with Tom and figure out what the next step was. If we're putting in an RFP, talk to Barney, possibly. He does more of those than I do, what the next step would be. If we're, if we're looking for them to review the pre-concept sketch, are we looking for them to, you know, what you're asking them to do?
Okay, Steve.
Just, just a suggestion, and I mentioned design collectives, because I know, that, that came up in a different setting. My, my only comment is, think about what you really need. Don't just go for the easy, don't just say, "Well, you know, the design collectives, they're easy to get, they're on retainer, we already have an agreement, let's just get them." If they're the right person, then get them. If they're not, because they haven't done enough of this, then don't get them just because they're easy. Go out and get the right people that you need, with the right expertise that can give you the lessons learned, because the better review you get, and again, that's your review, they're gonna consult you, and they're gonna, and then you're gonna take their input and decide, you know, how that factors into your judgment of the pre-concept plan. The, the better the, the people you get with the better credentials, the better off you will be, I believe, as a planning commission, to be able to tell the public, "We thought about this, we went out and we got a resource, we got somebody good who knows, knows this and has done it, and we listened to their wisdom and advice, and it helped us in our review process." I think that would make you stronger.
Okay, so you'll lead the way for the council to get approval for the amount of money that we're gonna need?
I think we already put in the budget, did we put $10,000 in there? I believe that there's $10,000 approved right now in the budget.
For this up and coming year, or for the present year?
I'm sorry?
This up and coming fiscal year, or this current year?
Yeah, for the, for, for this coming fiscal.
Up and coming, next, the next fiscal, fiscal year, so if need be, we'll adjust it.
Yeah.
And go from there.
But that's a start. I mean, that, that, that should get you some.
Something.
Probably enough hours of review time to get you going.
Yeah.
Can't occur until July 1st.
Yeah, it's a, it's a placeholder, and not to get off the side, it's like, as I suggested, we need, as the motion says, we should wait till the appropriate time, because we should wait till like the final pre-concept plan has been submitted, and then seek assistance with the review, instead of do it, send it out, come back, now, which is not the intent of this. It's to intend to get the best review, once the pre-concept plan has been finally submitted, that we all agree with, prior to approval.
Once it's something that's much closer to seemingly being acceptable to, to everyone, without final approval.
Yes, exactly.
So, so those are my thoughts, guys. I'm trying to be helpful.
Thank you.
That was the intent of my request, and I think that's.
We'll, we'll shepherd, shepherd it through Roxanne, if, if need be, for more money or funding.
Well, I think it's gonna take more money.
Yeah.
I honestly do.
Yeah.
I don't think that's close enough, but, so, John, you're gonna have to put together an RFP?
I guess so.
You do some research to find out how much, you know, how many hours, and what it's gonna cost for a consultant to come in here and look at the different stages. I don't think that they're gonna be able to just look at one stage, and, I mean, they're gonna be able to help us, but I think I would like them to go through the whole process for one of these, I think, to help.
John, it's also possible that reaching out and having some, some dialogue with the design collective, they may be aware.
They do, they do mixed use as well.
Well, they do some, but I think they, they would be aware of consultants that might be, you know, useful for us to have a conversation with. The other thing would be to identify other locations, other communities that had done a significant project of this type, and learn from their experience, learn from their insight, utilize that experience for our purposes. The RFP is only part of it. It's how you use it, how you shape it, what you're asking for, how it builds upon what you're already aware of.
I'd like to have that ready to go out, like, in the next two weeks, because I think it's gonna take some time for that to, for us to get any response from that. So, sorry. Got some research there to do.
Well, but it's, this is.
But it's important.
It's a better path.
Yeah.
Much more productive path.
Process question here, maybe Barney or Tom can answer, or the town attorney can answer. Can we put an RFP out for funding of, for the upcoming fiscal year, or do we need to wait for the RFP to be put out once the new fiscal year starts?
You can put it out now. I mean, you just tell them it wouldn't start till July 1st.
Right.
Okay. All right, just.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, next is ordinance 2022 dash 11, the forest stand delineation. We need to change the code of the town of Mount Airy to align with the Carroll County code. We have the ordinance here in front of us.
I'm gonna defer to Tom on this, because, again, he's our legal code person, so.
So, as, as Mr. Bowman from the county, had advised us recently, while the county at one point in time undertook this review prior to the concept plan submission and review, it's now the case, and I believe has been the case for a while, that the county actually does that, requires the submission, and does that as a part of the concept review. Our ordinance, when originally drafted, of course, is based on the county's original ordinance, so this seeks to change to, it's really a matter of timing, and to make, you know, the process here consistent with what we understand, at least, is the county's process.
As I said, Madam Chair, may?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As I said earlier, Tom, as I sent you an email, I just wanted, out of the whole concept, I just want to make sure that, on page 204, that the, what the Carroll County Forest Conservation Ordinance number 106 is still the current language, because, as I indicated in the email, when I did the search, it didn't pop up, it popped up as county code ordinance 52 or whatever, so I just want to make sure that's referenced correctly in it.
I, I believe it is, because when they, I, I haven't traced this.
Yeah.
Probably somebody in the room who knows better than me, I'm not sure, but.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I believe that the FSD ordinance really was untouched. It was a separate section that talked about what you have to provide in the, at the concept plan review that may have changed. I haven't traced what changed when exactly, but anyway. I, I believe it's still ordinance 106, but you know, we could easily change that to refer to.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I can verify, if you.
All right.
Be great, thank you.
I'll just forward this to Jonathan Bowman for his review, to make sure it's correctly numbered, and I'll do that tomorrow morning.
Cool, thank you.
And if we can find actual Carroll County code that addresses this, my, my interest And if we can find actual Carroll County Code that addresses this, my, my interest is the context of, of this Carroll County Forest Conservation Ordinance, what it is dealing with, if it's preservation of, of forests and trees and so forth, or if it's something else, I wanna understand its utility for.
Yeah, it's on, I mean, I did a quick search, you can go to the Forest Natural Resource Conservation, click the, I wanna say, sounds kind of bad, but the application, they have a little link that says, "Application and Documents." You click on that, and it pulls up the whole list of the manual, the process, it's like 10 things, and I read over the manual, not briefly summarized, it goes through the whole process, what they're looking, looking for, what it's, the whole process, it gives the whole thing, it's just not a blank, do this, there is a whole document for it.
Could you forward a link?
Yeah.
To us?
Yeah.
All right, great.
So, at this point, we want, does anybody feel comfortable making a recommendation to take back to, we have to recommend back to Town Council, correct, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone feel comfortable making a motion to send this back to Town Council, or do you want another, you want some time for research?
I mean, I can, again, it's up to you guys, I can forward it to John Bowman for review and bring it back to you next month if that's what you want, with additional questions.
Is there a timing issue?
No, you got the.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to do that then, thank you. Next, I ask John to put these back on the MP and the CC district. Can we flip these and do the MP first and then the CC? Is that okay with everybody? At the last council meeting, this, oh, I'm sorry, I have to wait. Martina's going to recuse herself because she has a, an conflict, she's trying to get her house rezoned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, at the last Town Council meeting, the ordinance was brought up, there was not even a motion made, so it basically died.
Now, that was the community commercial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The neighborhood professional was voted down, forwarded forward.
That's right. So, that's why we're starting with this one. So, I would like, I don't know that we can go over this this evening, but I want, I want us to review this and bring it back in June to see if we can have, I don't even know what they want, because they didn't say anything. I think they said they thought that it was too cumbersome a little bit.
I mean, they, I reached out.
Hold on, go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Leslie.
I was, I was there for the neighborhood professional discussion, which turned into a critique of our, all of our zoning, our entire zoning code, and misunderstanding, and you made them, you must have suggested that how complicated it is that month before, because they said it was really complicated. So, the reason, now, I'm not, I'm not speaking specifically to neighborhood professional, but, you know, the reason that there is, that there are these zones, is so you're not building, you're not having industrial and commercial next to residential and stuff like that. Now, now, mixed, it's also one of the reasons that we created the mixed-use zone, because then you, you have more flexibility, and you're not just having this equillidian zoning, but it doesn't mean, I mean, to me, it doesn't mean that you want to completely get rid of, you know, commercial zone and especially industrial, and have some ability to kind of determine where things are gonna be. Now, the reason that the, that apparently nobody understood, and I'm sorry I had to miss that meeting in April, no, that was March, no, that was April, yeah, April, the community commercial, that was proposed specifically to make it consistent with the limited commercial, because I had that pulled up, but, so, you cannot have limited commercial, you cannot change a zone or zone property as a limited commercial if it's next to, it's gotta be next to something that's higher.
More intensive.
More intensive, more intensive. So, when the council, way before any of us, I think, were on this board, when they created limited commercial district, a neighborhood professional district, so that they could gradually, you know, that you'd have these, what do you call it, kind of?
Graduated.
Yeah, graduated zones, so you have neighborhood professional next to residential, then you can have limited professional, professional next to neighborhood professional. Well, they, in my, in my, you know, I don't know this, it's just sort of intuiting this, that they just forgot to change the community commercial, because why would you be allowed to put community commercial next to residential, but you're not allowed to put limited commercial next to residential? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't make sense.
So, that was the, that was the reason that we were trying to amend the, the community commercial, which we actually started about two years ago, or a year and a half ago, and somehow it kept getting lost and only popped up two months ago on your agenda. So, it was nothing nefarious, nothing, you know, underhanded or sneaky, we were just actually trying to make it consistent with limited commercial. So, that was the reason for that. Now, neighborhood professional, as I recall, a couple of years ago, what we had to do was we had to do a, what do you call it when you put something over the other?
A text amendment?
Text amendment for a, for so as Schwartz's, Dr. Schwartz's practice ophthalmology or optometry or whatever. The purpose of neighborhood professional, I think it says it in the, in the current code, is to use properties that exist, and that it might be vacant, or, you know, they're just, they're old houses, and they're bordering, they're in residential neighborhoods, or they're bordering residential neighborhoods, so you can, you can, and no one's gonna live in them, and most of them are across 27, near the Five Guys and the, you know, there's all the, there's like Dr. Andrews.
Dr. Andrew.
And, which I think, and that's where Dr. Schwartz is gonna be. So, but in his situation, he had to tear down the house and rebuild, and it was a technicality where he couldn't make it as big as if he was keeping the original structure and just adding on to it. So, therefore, what we were trying to do in amending this zone is just making that applicable, you know, and say, if it's, if it's been vacant for three years, at least three years, then you can do this. So, that was the reason, it's actually to make it easier for someone who wanted to use their property as an office or doctor, you know, medical officer, this, a certain type of, you know, commercial use that can be in neighborhood professional. So, there is a reason for this. Now, now, they could certainly be done better, there's no question of this, if people have lots and lots and lots of time, and those council people who didn't like these ideas wanna spend lots and lots and lots of time, you know, that's great, but I don't think we wanna just get rid of them because they're too complicated, maybe we can just simplify them in some way, but that's, you know, someone's gotta have some time to be able to do that. So, anyway, so that's my explanation, anyone else have?
So, it basically starts with adaptive reuse of what exists.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
I would, I would like to just send this back to them with explanation, John, as to what we just said. I mean, if you want me to explain it the next meeting.
Well, Carl understands it, because he was the only one there who was trying to vote for it, but if nobody else understands it yet, then it's not, there's not gonna be any point.
I reached out to several of the council members that didn't explain, not, I did not hear back from them, because, you know, one of them's on vacation, so I understand that, but I tried out the council meeting saying that, you know, hey, it's just a updated language, we're not changing application, where it goes or anything else, just play off, as council, as Commission Member Leslie just said, it's just updating the wording of the language. We reviewed it for the other one, we noticed the changes, I'm happy to bring it back, and with explanation of what Roxanne says, it was just said here, it wasn't applying it any differently, it was just updating the wording to it, adding hours of operation that were not present there to make it almost more neighborly or neighborhood professional, neighborly more so than potential conflicts farther, farther down the road, so.
And, and the other option is that we can have a joint workshop or five, you know, and we can work with the council, and we can, like, some of them seem like maybe they wanna do is revamp the entire zoning code scheme. However, if we're gonna do that, I, I think that would need to be done before we finish the master plan, because there's no sense, you know, finish the master plan and then change it everything. So, I'll leave that up to you guys who get paid.
So, the master plan.
This is the council.
Right. The master plan 2023 then becomes a master plan of 2025.
Yeah, and that's what I was.
But, I, I mean, I'm agreeing, it's, I agree with Leslie, you know, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying, we're trying the best we can, this is a, you know, an older town with, with a lot of little idiosyncrasies in it, and we're trying to do the best that we can to get the zonings to work within the confines of what we have.
And one.
I would like you to take it back to them, if they don't see, then suggest that, then we're going to ask for a joint workshop.
On this or?
On this and CC.
Okay.
Or all of them.
Or all of them if they feel that there's a problem.
I, no, I know what you mean, yeah.
They're all interconnected.
We can go over the whole code book if they want to.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Carl.
The, the basis here is a series of gradations, all right, so it's not so jarring to have all-out commercial next to residential.
Yeah.
It's, they're stair steps.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really the simplicity of the concept.
Unless you're mixed use, so that you're choosing that, that you understand what you're getting into.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Madam Chair, I have a technical question, so, I'm not sure, does it have to go back to Carl to introduce it? If it's gonna be an ordinance change, I would think it would have to, Carl would have to reintroduce it, but we need to make sure whatever he's reintroducing is what you wanna present. You're, you wanna present those documents that were basically declined, or you wanna modify those documents?
I will turn on these, and I, we like what they've said, that's why we asked them, that's why we sent them these, I would, yes.
What happens if they deny it again?
Then we're gonna ask for a workshop.
And we'll have lots of workshops.
We'll have lots of workshops.
Potentially delay the master plan.
Correct.
Until 2025, I would rather.
I'm, I'm only kidding about the 2025, but it's gonna, it's gonna send it down the road.
Yeah, it's gonna delay something that shouldn't be delayed, and we can work on that after the master plan's approved, if it needs to be, and I don't know.
No, we're not changing the ordinances after the master plan.
No, it's gotta be changed, changing the ordinances before.
Yeah.
Before it finishes.
So, no.
They can hire a consultant to do that for them, too.
So, no, I'll be, I'll get the ball rolling, and I guess for the June meeting, is okay, if it can be, because I don't believe there's been the deadline announced for the June meeting yet.
Right, the agenda is, I think, supposed to come out, just the draft agenda's supposed to come out this week, I think.
Or next week, it's, yeah, it hasn't been announced yet, so I'll mention it, bring them back on, and we'll get the numbers reassigned and get it going again.
So, that's for both of the MP and the CC?
Yes. And they proposed changes, correct, as is for the two ordinances, right?
What was said before, right?
Yep.
All right, I just wanna.
With the comments, don't forget.
Yeah.
Right.
Not a problem, thank you.
It might be more productive to have a workshop with them.
I think so, too.
So, maybe we should be asking for that instead of asking for it to be reintroduced.
I think a workshop is, is an important step.
Well, for something as, as central and important is this, I think, because your, your zoning, you know, it undergirds so, so much else.
And there's a lot, there's a lot going on for the other council members that we don't know about, and Carl doesn't know about, getting that all out.
I'm, I'm in favor of that as well.
Can't do it till July, though, because we already have a June.
Right.
June's, yeah. We'll work on some, a workshop or something, and we've got 90 days once it comes back to you all in June for consideration, so.
Just.
I mean, I guess, I guess what you could do is you could discuss with the other council members what they're looking for, or what, if there's some confusion or whatever, whatever it is.
Well, yeah, I've got one or two comments back from a couple, and as I said, one's on vacation, which I understand, I haven't heard back from the other, so we'll see. I've already reached out and seen this, try to get it moving quicker and see what happens.
Leave that in your hands, you know how we.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we'll get, yep, thank you.
Okay, the, the next thing is the possible joint work session with the Planning Commission and Town Council. Green Tree has, the developer for Green Tree has come back with a revised pre-concept plan, so we need to look at possible dates for that to be presented to Town Council.
You can come in.
Come back in, yeah.
At the June 6th meeting.
So, they, so they have it, they have a revised.
They have it.
Yeah, they did.
Roxanne, we have a.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Speaker.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Heather Wallace, 2002, Forbines, Fort. I was just wondering if it's possible to go back to the charrette instead of going right to a workshop, where it's giving the public the opportunity to comment.
Okay, I was, thank you. I was thinking of that, I mean, gonna discuss that.
Thank you.
While we're discussing this.
For what?
Well, yeah, for Green Tree. This is a, okay, so, this is a new zone, and this is the first time we're running through this, so, we always have the workshop where we ask for no public comment, so, I, I don't wanna push it all the way back to the public charrette, but I'm thinking that if it comes back through a second time and we do the joint workshop, would you all be amenable to having the public comments at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as we can get all our comments in.
Well, I think it would be appropriate if we're going to see some modification, you know, that, that the developer's going to provide, and I think we wanna hear public feedback on that, if there's still concerns and why, and so forth. I mean, it's, this is our first real application.
Right. And to further this, the mayor had asked that we consider doing public comment at the workshop for the Beck property, and Jason, the president of the council, sent an email back, he is not in favor of that at this time, he's, but I kinda see it from both sides. I think if something comes back, if it, the pre-concept comes back, we're not, we're not finished with the Beck property yet, but when somebody comes back around, his suggestions were that we have the public comments, no, he didn't want any public comments, but I think when we come back the second time, that that's a good time to have the public comments.
Madam, Madam Chair, so, we're actually speaking about the Green Tree.
Yes, yes, we are.
Not Beck, so we're trying to determine the date.
I know, no, we are, but they, we're, yes, I know, but I'm trying to say, there's gonna be a connection, and I wanna try to implore Jason to think about having the public comment on the Green Tree, especially because it's coming back around the second time.
Well, I agree with that, and I wanna just point something out, which is the reason that we don't have, the reason it started out that we didn't have comment at our workshops is because they were really master planning workshops, and so we were there to do business and to kind of flesh out what was going on with the master plan. It wasn't when we're dealing with this type of really intensive and serious zoning issues that people are very interested in, so I consider it to be a completely different thing, and if we didn't call it a workshop, then we would have public comment, so we can call it something else and have, but you know? So we can call it something else and have, you know, because that's why we don't have public comment.
Correct.
I mean, we only started having workshops, like, before the last time we would occasionally have them. But now we have them every month, but it's for the master plan. And then all this other stuff has come in. So we're having more workshops that have nothing to do with the master plan and where people should be able to make comments.
Madam Chair.
What?
Nothing, go ahead, no, I'll touch with that.
It's not just up to Jason because this is, this is not a town council meeting.
No, I, I understand, I understand. I'm just saying, I, I see both sides. I, I like the fact that when it comes back around, we have the public comment.
Well, just keep it very limited, like, you get your two minutes and that's it, rather than people coming back and coming back and coming back.
Well, and that was, and that was one of the things that was suggested, too, is that we each have the public comments. And then each one of us, if we have comments, we have the two minutes or the five minutes so that we, you know, we don't keep asking questions back and forth so that it doesn't take as long. That's what I would like to do with the Green Tree.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
So if we can try to set a date, is what I'm trying to achieve.
Okay.
Still, still trying to figure out a date.
All right, we're getting there, John.
Okay.
Well, I guess we can set, set the date and then start discussing the process. But I'll let Ralph go first, Mr. Gann go first.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just Ralph Gann, just keep in mind, just be cognizant of however you handle the revised pre-concept plan with Green Tree. It does set a precedent for what could be a similar journey.
Exactly.
With regard to the larger and perhaps more passionate public regard toward the Beck property. So again, whatever is decided on the revision handling.
Yep, thank you.
Public charrette could be a confidence building to the public to make sure that they still have another opportunity to weigh on in any revisions. So thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to have to cut him off at some point.
I know.
I would just.
Just a real quick comment. And I'm not here as a council member to tell you what I think about the pros and cons of connecting public comments right in front of the workshop. This did cross my mind as I was hearing this. And that is, like, sometimes it's helpful to me as a council member to hear the public comments, be able to reflect on them, go back, think about them on my own a little bit, get my, get my thoughts together, see if that's reframed my thinking. And then, when I go to the workshop, I'm thinking about the public comments and, and my thoughts, and I'm able to make a better decision and better judgment. Sometimes when you hear public comments, like, now, and then half an hour later, you start working through a decision-making process, I always like more time to reflect on, on what people have, have said. So that's, that's a pro, in my view, to keep them separate in some fashion.
Means we need another hearing where people can make comments before the joint workshop.
I, I, or, or they, or they come to a town council meeting and during the public comment period, present their comments. I don't know what the right answer is, and I'm not suggesting what the right answer is. But that did cross my mind. I know for me, the way I work, I like to listen, think, reflect, I reframe myself, and then I'm ready to go and, and have a more productive meeting instead of just right away. And then I am a little concerned about the atmosphere that might be created in that kind of a setting in terms of, you know, tension, energy, emotions.
You talking to workshop, Steve?
I'm talking, if you have comments right before the workshop.
During the same night.
You're already starting off perhaps in a very emotional frame of reference for everybody. So those are just some quick thoughts. Thank you. Thanks, thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More public before I ask for permission, Madam Chair? I don't want to cut to public. Thank you. Now, I mean, I'll just, throughout this whole process, even the design of MXD and everything, I've always been advocate for more public outreach and input in the design process. So no matter if it's, I believe the public should be able to see the plan prior and make comments to it. If that's a charrette, call it what it will, a workshop or what, but the public should be allowed to speak before we get our own, say, personal time for discussions. Because as long as the comments are relevant to the project, what's designed, I don't have a problem with. But if it starts going off tangent on everything, that then becomes a problem. And then if you have a comment on something that's not related to the project, please come to the town council and speak on that. But let's reserve the charrette or something for the project at hand. It just makes a good process better, easier, and does not, I want to say mess it up because then the comments start getting confusing of which project we're talking, talking about. So if it needs to be a charrette, I think it needs to be a charrette if it, and go from there. But the public should be allowed to speak.
To the charrette stage, do we still have to do 30-day advertising for those type of public meetings? I would think we would have to start that block by November.
I would say, yes.
Right, so we'd have to, and so if we go to the charrette, then we're going to have to have a public hearing after that. So it's going to basically start back at the beginning? Am I correct? For the whole process? I mean, I don't, I'm not sure. I would think that we'd have to almost.
If, if you're going to go back to the beginning and do a charrette, I guess you would have to.
Advertise.
Now. I'm not sure that the ordinance says that, but.
I don't think it does. I mean, I don't think it addresses what happens if it gets.
Instead, you call it something else. And it's basically a freebie. You're getting something that you weren't going to get in the process.
Yeah, I mean, what the ordinance says actually about the joint workshop, it does say that the Town Council and Planning Commission shall hold a public joint workshop with the applicant to discuss the pre-concept sketch layout plan, public comment, and potential modifications there, too. Now, in this particular instance, as in Beck, I believe what occurred is that the public comment function got separated from the joint workshop. Which, who's to criticize that, right? There's a lot of public comment and there's probably a lot of work to do at the workshop and probably gets to what Councilman Demoter was saying. And it says there's nothing wrong to have done that. I'm just saying that happened the last go-round, but that does not mean that you can have public comment in your next joint workshop or in your, any workshop you have or in any meeting you have.
Well, regardless of that, we should have an agenda, which we did not have with the first Beck.
Right.
It was really kind of disorganized. And that was kind of a free-for-all. We really needed a.
Right.
And we need to be.
Currently agenda ready for this Beck workshop.
There is an agenda?
Yes.
Good.
And we need to be controlling it, not the developer, like you.
Right.
You and Jason.
Yeah.
That's not what was happening before.
Oh, Heather. Yeah, absolutely.
The point would be for the public to be able to ask questions.
Right.
Get some back and forth discussion. And I don't think that public comment is as long.
Uh-uh.
The point is, the point is for the public to be able to have a back and forth during the presentation. And I think sometimes public comment is just limited to, we make a statement for two minutes and then we walk away. So it's not really a give and take.
Yeah, so that is a whole different thing. So then that means we set something up so the developer is actually presenting and the people.
He's presenting the upgraded comment. We're having a Q and A with the public is essentially what's happening.
Yeah. And then, after that, we have the workshop.
Then we have the workshop.
But maybe not this, maybe this.
Right.
Take a public charrette and then have a workshop after.
Whatever we call it, public Q and A, yeah.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to call it a charrette. You have to, 30 days notice. Oh, boy.
Please turn the mic on and leave, and leave it on, please.
First of all, let's separate the discussion between Beck, MXD, Green Tree, MXU. They are entirely different sections of the code. And trying to compare the two of them gets confusing for the public. My suggestion being that if you are looking to allow for additional public input on Green Tree, that you then allow the developer and the development team to present the revised concept, solicit public input during, back and forth, as the citizen has, has suggested, that if they ask questions, we can provide answers to it. And then you can move into the end of that public period where then it becomes a discussion between the town council, the planning commission, and the developer on the concept that's being presented, based upon the public input. Particularly that works because this is not a new shot. You've already seen the property, you've seen the concept, and you, the town council made specific recommendations for revisions in that concept.
I mean, that's fine with me. I think it's, makes sense.
But you're talking, okay, do we do that all in one night?
I mean, that's what makes sense, yeah, rather than that.
Yes.
Public comments and we cut it off and that's it. Take those comments and we.
I think so, particularly for Green Tree. Now, you may find after the workshop of Beck that you want to do something a little bit changed from it depending upon the concept that's presented at that time. They're both different magnitudes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Different process.
See, I have seen, since Roxanne, since the chairwoman has indicated that there is a new plan, I have looked at it. And I would like to say thank you for taking my comments into consideration in the revised plan. So I do appreciate that. And you listened to what I had to say and what the citizens had to say at the, from the previous workshops. So I presume that this plan, the pre-con, the new concept plan, once the date is set, will be out there for public review or to look at online for the town. So I guess we still have to set the date if we, once we decide on what's.
The sooner the better, both in setting the date and the date being sooner.
Yeah.
Well, we got 30, we got to do it out 30 days, right?
Well, Tom is saying no.
Okay.
It might not be because we've already had those public charrettes.
Okay, okay.
I would say at least, I would say at least I'd like to get it in the paper and send out adjoining property owners' letters, and that's 15 days.
Just as a scheduling for council, I'll just say this, and not to be painting a butter or anything, don't do it in June because we got MML in two weeks. And that's just going to, by the timing of everything, it's done, then we have 4th of July after that, then the new holiday of Juneteenth in June. So just to be fair to everybody out there in the public, July would probably be a better date just to make sure people can attend it for us.
I think more people will be going on vacation and driving.
I know, I know.
I mean, I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, I know. But I'm, I'm just saying June would be very hard for council to meet, to make it.
We have the June 2nd.
We have the one, yeah, we have the June 2nd.
So my, my thought would be, and this was just something I was thinking of, is why don't we have that prior to the 27th Planning Commission meeting? As long as most of the town council or some of the town council could be present for the Beck, publicly.
Hold on. You just said Beck.
You're talking Beck or Green Tree?
Green Tree.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we can do that combination all in one night.
Okay.
Depends on what our agenda's going to be like. Would you happen to know?
I mean, if you make it a real light agenda and we don't start until 8 o'clock, we'll be okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know of any major projects that are coming up that will be making that deadline to be on the June meeting. But I can't, you know, right now I can't tell you.
I mean, it would be okay with me if it wasn't some, if it was a light agenda, yeah.
Yeah. And we'd start at 6:00. Is everybody still good starting at 6:00? I mean, I'm just going to throw that out there. Is 6:00 okay for the public? I mean, I think it, I don't know, that seems a little early for me.
6:30.
Let's try 6:30. Go 6:30 to 8:30 and then we'll start our meeting.
Again, we still need to get town council's approval.
Exactly.
We want to present to them on the 6th. So if we have the 7th, 27th at 6:30 for public comment for a half an hour, and then holding the workshop at 7:00, you're saying? Is that how you want it? I'm just trying to figure how you want to do it.
Uh-oh, start at 6:30.
6:30 is your public meeting.
Is the public Q and A with the developer for half an hour?
I need a little more time.
I would say an hour.
Okay.
We should, we should hold.
I would say an hour.
So that's 7:30.
So that's 6:30 to 7:30.
And then, holding the joint workshop, you're saying?
Start at 7:30.
7:30 to 7:45. How's that? Do you think we can get all of our questions in or are the work done? No, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I say 7:45? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
7:30, 8:30.
I said Beck.
Yeah.
And then the Planning Commission meeting?
And then the Planning Commission meeting.
On the 27th.
On the 27th.
That's if people are comfortable with that. So that was just an idea I had, not to say.
I'm, I'm.
I hate to push the project off until August. I mean, that's, that's irresponsible on our part, in my opinion.
Let me see, it's a, it's a starting point we didn't have before. So we got something to start with.
Ronnie, you okay with that? Possibly having that Q and A before the Planning Commission on the 27th?
Yes. And if I can be here earlier to answer questions for people, too, it's dependent upon whether you believe the entire Planning Commission and Town Council should be here to listen to all of that stuff.
Well, I think we, I think 6:30 is a good time for the public. I mean, we'll say the developer is here starting at 6:00. If anyone wants to come then to ask any questions, they can. But it won't be, that would still have to be public.
Yeah.
And I would be here to receive public and.
Yeah, I'll, same thing, John. I'll try and be here a little bit early at 6:00 if I know that that's what's going to happen, to let people in and things of that.
Yeah.
6 to 7. After the town council.
After, after we discern, after we determine if that's a good meeting time, well, but as soon as we determine a meeting time, definitely they'll be up.
Two weeks before.
Yeah.
Right, so two weeks prior to the meeting. Correct.
That one, you don't pressure.
Yes.
In short change of process, that maybe should be approved.
Wait, are you going to be bringing something else?
Well, I missed something.
But let's just put it this, okay, so the meeting, right now the council will be revised of June 27th at 6:30 for the joint workshop. But it will also make it known, or the public Q and A, the beginning of the whole workshop public Q and A, will make it known that the developer or their representative will be available approximately 6:00 for anyone that wants to show up earlier than have, not prior, but just side conversations or discuss with them that. And then all to be finalized at the June council meeting, which is 6:06. And then I guess we don't have a problem with posting the plan now on the website.
It won't be posted until the 13th.
Two weeks, 13th of June.
So the town council will approve the 27th work session or Q and A. That following Monday is when it'll be posted online through the town website for a review prior to the 27th. So that's two weeks out.
Okay.
Property will get posted, postings will go in the newspapers, items will get sent out to adjoining property owners on that 13th.
Okay.
And the plan will be presented, posted on our website.
Actually, if, if the town council doesn't want to come to the Q and A, they don't necessarily have to, but we do need them at the joint workshop.
Which would be.
7:30.
7:30 to 8:30.
7:45.
Yeah, 7 to 7:45. I tell, it's been a long day.
Just say joint workshop begins at 7:30, so council's needed at that time.
And again, we'll start our Planning Commission meeting. If it ends up being that.
The Planning Commission meeting will happen right after the workshop ends, whenever that is.
It could be 8:00, 8:30, whatever.
I just kind of wish that the plan could be posted earlier, but I understand, online. But I do understand that two weeks before it's code and stuff, so.
Well, we want to make sure the planning, the town council is willing, is, wants to meet on that date.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, I understand it, yeah.
What do you got, Roxanne?
I thought Ron was gonna say.
Confirm at 6:00, or publicly, 6:30 starts the workshop?
Uh-uh.
Yes.
Yes.
No, the Q and A starts at 6:30.
He's calling it a workshop because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Q and A 6:30 to 7:30, joint workshop, starting at, the joint workshop with Planning Commission and Town Council, 7:30 till whenever, and then the Planning Commission meeting will start immediately after.
Basically, your people need to be here at 6, between 6:00 and 6:30, Ron, for the whole evening?
6.
6? I'm sorry, no. The workshop starts at 6, 7:30.
Well, it depends on, I mean, if we don't have an hour worth of questions, then we'll start it.
Right, we'll start it earlier.
We'll start it as soon as, by 7:00 or earlier.
7:00, yeah. Just show up by 7:00 just in case. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And we're finished with that? Just a question?
I think so.
Okay, June 2nd, we have the Beck property joint work session. We will not be having public comment at this work session.
But we're not voting.
We're not voting either, no. I think it's gonna take more than, I think we're gonna have to have another one, but anyway.
And again, that will be held remotely at the Activities Building or Reception Hall at the Mount Air Carnival grounds.
By remotely, you just mean not here. Right, not electronically.
Offsite.
We're not back under COVID restrictions yet, John.
Okay.
Just over you.
That's fine, no, I have nothing else to report. Chairwoman Roxanne gave a wonderful review of the council meeting right after it. So I have nothing else to add, just verify that what she said was truthful. And the next council meeting is Monday 6:06 at, hopefully at 7:30, but I could be, there could be some stuff prior to that.
I do want to confirm on the CCNP. So at this point in time.
CCNP?
NP.
NP and CC.
Okay.
So right now, you're gonna reintroduce.
Yes.
As is.
As is, I'll mention it to Jason to get on, the council president and Holly to.
Set a workshop.
To set a, or to get it on the council agenda. Because I guess code is, since it's Planning Commission, it comes back to the, back to Planning Commission for review. We have 90 days, or the Planning Commission has 90 days to fiddle with it or send it back as is. I guess we'll have it during the discussion at the council. You know, we, the Planning Commission has indicated workshop maybe potentially, if, to hash out things, but just let us know, just let us, let them know at the council meeting if that's your prefer. But send it back and we'll set up the workshop.
So again, you're gonna reintroduce the town council.
Yes.
Kick at the planning, and then we're gonna say, we want a workshop.
If that's so, what the council, the commission here wants.
That's what it sounds like.
If they don't say anything, if they.
Yeah.
If there's no action taken again, then we want a workshop.
No, we need a workshop.
Okay, I just want to confirm.
Anything else? We have the zoning administrative report, annexed, Planning Commission date is June the 27th, and that's going to change, it will not be at 7:00. It will be when the workshop ends.
For the Q and A, right?
We have the Q and A starting.
And then the workshop.
Yeah, the Q and A.
I'll try to get something posted on our website.
Officially from 6:30 to 7:30, but he will be here early, that's what we keep saying. And then the workshop from 7:30 to 8:30 if needed. And then after the workshop, we will start our Planning Commission meeting. Nobody bring anything new to the Planning Commission meeting that night.
No. I have a question, kind of unrelated, but people keep asking me, and I'm curious, that the property that's, the house has been built on Park Avenue.
Yes.
It's like two feet from the other house. As I say, you know, we didn't, it's a permit, we didn't, like, it didn't come before the Planning Commission, so I can't answer their questions.
It's a, those are existing lots of records that were there, and they're meeting all the setback requirements for that zone. They did get.
Like only like.
If I can finish.
Oh, sorry.
Again, the property that's right on Frederick Avenue on Park Avenue went through Board of Appeals for a reduction for a side guard setback. Again, so there exist lots of records, the houses are meeting the setback requirements.
And there's existing lots at the Board of Appeals was, were formed 1900s?
Yeah, they're old, old, old. They're very old lots.
That's why, that's why.
That's very old lots.
1918 is.
1918, so they're old, old lots of records. So whatever was the current standard back then, we still have to follow it because there are lots of record.
You build it, they will come, that's what it was.
I mean, I was, I didn't care, but people keep asking, you know.
One other question, because we've, we had two things go to Board of Appeals. They have had their meeting on both of those, the daycare. And the bed and breakfast.
Both approved.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
I saw moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.